I'm going to call the meeting to order at nine o'clock. Can I have roll call, please?
Heather Owen.
Here.
And then East Deck is joining us via conference call. John McPherson.
Yep.
Virginia Mendoza. Jaime Fernandez.
You're.
Mary Claypool.
Present.
Sandra Ocampo.
Here.
Dr. Janine Gus. Present.
Um, can I have, Terry, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. And let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For at one point for adoption of the agenda and you all should have received their revised, oh, sorry, wrong part, adoption of the agenda, right?
Cindy's.
Can I get it? Sorry, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? And seconded, can I get a roll call vote?
Heather Owen.
Hi.
Annette East Deck.
Yeah.
John McPherson.
I.
Virginia Mendoza.
I.
Jaime Fernandez. Mary Claypool. Sandra Ocampo.
I.
Okay, it's been, uh, motion has been approved. Communications, is there any correspondence?
Yes, we received a letter from the California Department of Education, and this letter is to notify us that the proposed formation of a new Greenfield Unified School District from Greenfield Union Elementary School District and the corresponding portion of South Monterey Joint Union High School District in Monterey County, that item will be heard July ninth through the tenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and this is the legal requirement for them to notify us, um, at this time. But please, uh, be aware that we did submit to the CDE, uh, yesterday, the request from the two districts involved to continue this item past July. So there are still meetings occurring and conversations occurring, and therefore, um, that request has been submitted. So we don't yet know if it'll be approved. But that's where the matter stands. So this correspondence is entered into the record.
All right, thank you. Um, is there any?
Wait, I, I think that Janine just read July something twenty twenty-four. I think she meant the letter probably said some July something twenty twenty-five.
No, it does say July.
Make sure the record is.
Oh.
Oh.
It does say.
It was supposed to be in twenty twenty-four?
No, no, I think CD, well, not I think now, thank you for pointing that out, Annette. That means the California Department of Ed did make an error in their letter because it would be July twenty twenty-five, but their letter does say twenty twenty-four.
What's the name of the letter?
Read correctly.
May.
May eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, it's just a typo, but I think we need to make sure the record, you know, reflects that they made a typo in their letter.
Yes, thank you for that catch.
Okay, um, we're on to two point two, oral comments from the public. Did we receive any? Oh, is there anybody here who wants to make a comment that's not related to items on the agenda? Okay, seeing that, um, we're moving on to three for the consent agenda, and that's where you should have all received the revised minutes for last board meeting. So can I get a motion to?
Uh, someone.
Second, it's been, um, moved and approved. Can I get a roll call vote?
Heather Owen.
Hi.
Annette East Deck.
Yeah.
John McPherson.
I.
Virginia Mendoza.
I.
Jaime Fernandez.
I.
Mary Claypool.
I.
Sandra Ocampo.
I.
Okay, motion passes. We are on to, um, item four, new business. Four point one is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget study session, page forty-one in your binder, and that's Dr. Gus and Dr. Stanley.
And hi. I'm so thrilled to tell you that this is actually the Dr. Stanley and team show today. So you have not only our amazing, um, chief business official who's best in the state. Yes, I am a little bit biased about that. Um, and all of the cabinet members who are here to answer any questions that are specifically about their particular budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stanley, and can I also just commend her and her team? Oh, yes, let me cover those items really quickly. I just want to commend, um, Colleen and her team on how smoothly they make the budget process work. As you know, you get the calendar, uh, way back in like January that describes, uh, the timeline for the process, how we take input on, um, our, from our stakeholders, on our LCAP and on our budget, and how each of the team members that you see, you see before you today, um, work very hard to make sure that everything that's in the budget, um, aligns with our priorities, and that's what you have, um, in front of you. The most up-to-date part of our strategic plan, so what we've accomplished and what we're still working on. So you have that. The other item that you have, um, in front of you is our work chart. This work chart, um, shows you visually all of the various positions that are funded in this particular budget. And so it, it's not going to say the name of the people, it's going to say the position and how many people do have those positions. Okay, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our amazing Dr. Stanley.
I'm going to turn my mic over, just to make sure that Annette can hear. Um, just one quick comment about the organizational chart. As you all know, um, budgets for school districts, including county offices of education, um, are primarily, um, salaries and benefits, right? So that's why it's so important that you have that work chart in front of you so you can see what it is that we're spending. Um, and before we get started, I want, I do want to introduce my team back here. We have Linda Horeishi, who is our new Internal Services Director, Talisa Rios, who, um, really was instrumental in putting this book together for us today. And then Billyana, um, is our Director for External Services. So that's my team here to support us and to answer any of your questions that I can't answer. All right, so you do have a big binder in front of you. I know it's a bit overwhelming. Um, so the first thing that I'd like to do is, if you're not very familiar with it, is just kind of walk through how we've together. And I do have a little memo that's in front of, of the books that actually kind of spells it out for you. So if you look at the first couple pages, you know, those are just the table of contents. And that really what you can see, which is pretty impressive, are all the programs that this county office runs. And then starting on page one, you have that summary spreadsheet that goes through every single one of our programs and shows you what was budgeted in the prior year compared to the current year. So that gives you a really good snapshot of where we are and what we're doing. As we move on in the book, you've got on page seven, a nice graph that just shows you some budgets, um, by expenditures. And then the next page, which is page eight, is really everyone's favorite page, right? So this and one page shows you exactly where all of our dollars are spent. General Fund, which is also the County School Service Fund, and all of our other funds. Anybody have any questions so far? Following that, we have a bunch of pretty graphs. And then we get into all the details for each of our programs. So that starts on page thirty, thirty-one. So every single one of our programs has a page that tells you a little bit about what the program is and what the differences are between this year and, um, last year. And then it gives you a summary of what the budget looks like and also comparison with the prior year. There's no one in the state who has a bigger budget binder than Monterey County. I've checked. All right, so with all that information, I'm going to jump into the PowerPoint and just kind of give you the summary overview so that you don't, um, have to get bogged down in some of the details. Oh, thank you. We moved ahead for a little bit. All right, so here's our Board Budget Study Session PowerPoint, May twenty-eighth, one of my favorite days. So what I, what I have done is I've grabbed a couple of the slides that came from the School Services, um, uh, Governor's Budget, um, PowerPoint that they did for us, just because some of this information is really important for us as we're moving forward, especially with all the unknowns that we deal with. One of the first unknowns is, is when we're putting the budget together, we don't even have the state adopt a budget. So all of this stuff, you know, you, you kind of pay attention to what's going out on and out in the world and try to make sure you put together a budget that's going to protect us as much as possible. And then, of course, during the year, we have all of our chances to make the revisions that we need to make. So this first slide, um, really just talks about what's happening in California and the kinds of things that we have to be aware of. So Governor Newsom did release his budget, um, for May. It didn't have very many changes in it that we weren't expecting. It is not as good a budget as was put together in January, but it still did not provide too big of a hit to education. A couple of the things that it did is it increased the deferrals that were planned, but they're not only budgetary, but through cash deferrals for, um, from twenty-five, twenty-six into twenty-six, seven. So that's a way that, um, he balances his budget based on our books. But we, um, the way it affects us is we just have to make sure that we are paying attention to cash. So as usual, cash is king, and we pay attention to that for all of our districts. Billyana runs reports on a monthly basis and makes sure that our districts are, you know, doing cash managing. So, um, I think that's it on that one. So here are the risks to the economy and the state budget. Um, unemployment, unemployment rate is projected to increase in the budget year. Stock market volatility, of course, as we've all heard. And then, of course, the anticipated cuts to our key federal programs. That's going to be a tough one if indeed it comes through. Um, as the state has told us many times, they do not have the capacity to backfill any shortage in federal funds. So what that means to our budget is we need to be really good at looking into the crystal ball to make sure that the programs that we hold so near and dear are able to be run and our students are still served. Um, there's several lawsuits pending, uh, so it'll be interesting to see how those come out. Chris, big three revenues are projected to be lower. I think I have a slide in here a little bit later that talks about, we're not in a recession.
Yeah.
What they call it, it's a growth recession. It was so interesting, I'm like, they may have these new words every time, every time a new budget comes around, right? So it's a growth, in quotes, recession, which means that we're kind of really in a recession because the growth is so small that, yeah, but it is still a, a tiny bit of growth that's happening in California economy. So anyway, we'll get through that. Um, on my next slide here, yes.
So before you go on, uh, when you said you go back to the lawsuit part.
Yeah.
And I'm getting on a call today with, uh, I was on a call, Senator Lard's office getting on a call today with, uh, somebody member Addis's office and Revis's office tomorrow.
Good.
One of the things they are, as part of this budget, they are making a, uh, Prop ninety-eight maneuver.
Yeah.
To not adhere to the Constitution in how they, they fund Prop ninety-eight. They, they tried this last year.
Right.
They're doing it this year. Um, CSBA's brought legal action, will bring, bring legal action again. And so that's something that's, that's in play. I get the feeling that they backed off last year because the numbers weren't as bad as they're going to be this year. I don't, I, it'll, I don't think they're going to back off this year because.
There's no other option, right?
Well, there is. The other option is to fund ninety-eight and make the, the adjustments in every place else in the budget that is not education. But everybody else in the budget who is not education always complains about how much money education gets. So that's why Prop ninety-eight was passed in the first place to base, it was supposed to be a floor, not a ceiling, it's ended up being a ceiling. And now they're looking to take a few steps down from the ceiling. So, uh, we'll keep, uh, we'll keep the team, uh, uh, apprised on that. And just, you know, for your recession thing, the definition of a recession is two straight quarters of negative growth. The first quarter was negative. So we're going to be, I think it'll be an official recession in about, yeah, in about four or five weeks.
Just love how they keep coming up with new words to describe it, it's just like, yeah. Yes, exactly, yes. So this slide right here, uh, is just talking a little bit still about the declining enrollment to bike. And they say up here, this is another one from School Services by County, and so they've got the big counties in there, and so we're lumped into all, all of the others. Because we are not declining enrollment quite as badly as some of the other counties. We've got a few districts that actually are increasing in their enrollments, so the net effect isn't as bad for our bond rate. But it shows you across the state still what is happening. We are still going down as far as, uh, the number of ADA that we generate in this, in the state. So the next, um, few slides here are the ones that I put in every year just to make sure that you have an idea of how it is that we put this budget together and what our guidelines and assumptions are. Um, one of the things that we always put in here is that all of our categorical programs, all of our restricted programs have to live within their means. So that means without any, um, contribution that comes from the general fund. We also have things in here that you just kind of need to know about, like, we always have a three percent in here for the routine restricted maintenance. That's a requirement by the state. All of our, um, budget, the budget year must be based on the projected revenue. Um, we do include carryover as we need to or as the programs have requested it, and you will see some of that in this budget book that we've already recognized some carryover. The rest of the carryover is going to be recognized at first interim. Um, all of our salaries and benefits are in here. We provide that information to our program managers when we first start putting the budget together. Justifications have to be provided for travel, for professional development, for consultant services, other major purchases, um, and capital outlay. So as our programs put these budgets together, they have to give us all of the reasons why they're spending the money that they're spending before we put it into the budget. Um, our indirect for ninety-five, uh, ninety-five, uh, what year am I in? See, see, Virginia, it could be, it could be June. We thought it was June, but it's really May. Um, indirect as much as at nine point nine six, which is a little bit low for us. And so, um, usually we have a double digit, like a ten or eleven percent. So we're looking into that for the next year. And we also, um, have a reserve for economic uncertainties at four percent that we are committed to keep despite the fact that at the state level, it is only a two percent that is their requirement. So we have doubled that. And here we go then, talking a little bit about, um, LCFF funding specifically just for county offices of education, because you know that county offices are funded very differently than school districts. And so it's always kind of a shock for people when they go, wait, how are you funded? Because school districts are funded by ADA, and so the more ADA they have, the bigger LCFF portion that they get. We have very little ADA, two hundred and fifty or something. And so you know that if we were funded by ADA, we would never be able to run. So county offices receive LCFF funding based on three different components. The first one is a base amount per county, then the number of school districts that we run that are under our jurisdiction, and then by the countywide ADA. So you can imagine as things change that our funding would change. If we have districts who unify, that means that we have one less district, and so that reduces one part of our funding. When there is countywide enrollment and which ends up being ADA that goes down, that means that we have less funding based on ADA. So all of those things affect our funding. But for twenty-five, twenty-six, we are expecting nine hundred and one thousand, seven fifty-seven as the base amount that every county receives. We have, uh, twenty-four school districts at this time, uh, which is multiplied by the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine fifty-two. And, um, the ADA is a tiered amount. And so between one and thirty thousand, it's one amount. Between thirty thousand and sixty thousand, it's another amount. Over sixty thousand, then it becomes a lesser amount. So you can see those dollar amounts that are multiplied out. Um, our alternative education also receives separate funding. Uh, they are receiving a base grant of sixteen thousand, nine fifty-one per ADA for this year. They have supplemental grant of five thousand, nine thirty-three and concentration grant dollars of two thousand, nine sixty-six, which are also multiplied by their, um, ADA. They also are receiving two hundred thousand dollars per, and that was the funding change that happened two years ago now, two hundred thousand dollars for each community school and two hundred thousand dollars for each homework school. So that is also added to their funding. Our revenue assumptions, as we went through here, our revised calculates the COLA at two point three zero. That was, um, up in the air for a while. It was two point three four at one point and, um, then projected to be closer to two percent. But it, um, settled out at two point three zero, may revise estimated interest rate that we're putting in there is three point seven five percent. We know it's going down, you saw just in the last, um, quarter, then it went down point oh two. So I am, it's, it's heading back down again. Lottery unrestricted is projected at one ninety-one per ADA and restricted at eighty-two dollars per ADA. And I, I put that in there because it's, um, still interesting to me that people have a misconception of how much lottery funds school districts. So you can see that it does not do much. So we, um, I have on the bottom right here that the tools used were the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team Calculator and School Services of California DART Board. I just make sure to put that in there because I don't want you to think that I'm making up any of these numbers. But across the state, all of the counties use these same tools so that we can do comparisons between our budgets easily. Expenditure assumptions, our step and call and movement is added to all eligible employees. Longevity is also added to eligible employees. Our health benefits, um, are still capped per our bargaining unit contracts. And I mentioned already, our approved indirect is nine point nine six. And CPI that we use, if we use it, um, they're generally applied to contracts that we, that, that are continuing contracts is three point four two percent. I have to do something like a dance to get Jaime to wake up.
You got eye contact?
Yeah. So, um, for, this is just a little one pager for you, um, for our twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget, um, County School Service Fund, and I always like to remind people that we kind of use this interchangeably. Um, the general fund. So this is, County School Service Fund is the county office's general fund, just like school districts have a general fund. So you can see that we, we separate our unrestricted and our restricted out. Um, and you can see, um, slides in the back that refer to these, which is why I have them noted at the top here. So what we've done is our projected balance of twenty-five million with our revenues and expenditures. We, um, have ended up with an ending balance of twenty-four million, eight hundred and seventy thousand and thirteen dollars. So you can see that we are not going down too far, nor are we going up too far. That our beginning balance of twenty-five is very close to that ending balance of twenty-four, which is really what you want to see, you want to see the stability. All right, so this is, this is the slide that you can see in your book. What page? Shout it out if you have it.
Nate.
Hey, Nate? All right, page eight. So this is our slide that is the one pager that really gives you an idea of where we are. So across the top, we've got special education, payroll, transportation, county office operations, media center, all the way over, um, including our ALP and migrant education, showing what our total, um, beginning balance is, and then our revenues with the expenditure is broken up the same way. You can see that a few, I mean, one, two, three of the programs have beginning balance that is listed up there. And so it appears when you look at the over and under, that it's, um, deficit spending, but it is not because of the carryover that we have put into the beginning balance already. Um, the bottom section are all the other funds. And then over on the right-hand side, we have our components of ending balance, which I have broken out in a little bit bigger as we continue through here. But this is a page that you can look at and just really see quickly a snapshot of where we are.
Uh, before you move on, can I just point out?
I know, we have to slow down because we need at least an hour and a half of this, right?
No, 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 just one thing that I want to point out here is you see the migrant education program, that fourteen million. That's what we stand to lose if it does not get funded in skinny budget. So just wanted to draw your attention.
Funded in the what?
In this, the Trump administration's budget is called the skinny budget. And in that budget, he is cutting, he's proposing to cut the money of your program.
So the current budget that has passed the House, the migrant program, is not in?
It's not in. Now, with that said, the program is typically a forward-funded program, which means last year's budget is the money we would be spending for this year as long as they send us what they're supposed to send us. And so the tricky part here is while it's cut in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Which would fund twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Is he gonna try to pull back any funding that should have been forward-funded for this year? So right now, everything we're hearing is, is forward-funded, but everybody knows that not all the rules are being followed right now. So we are waiting to see what will actually happen. So wanted to put that on your radar because we will be doing major advocacy over these next, you know, probably four, five months, or no, not even five, these next three to four months, um, specifically advocating for the migrant program, because that's the one that will affect us most.
And just to clarify, the early learning program, uh, column is where Head Start is, and that was on the chopping board, but it's been saved right now that we know of, correct?
Correct. As of today.
And, but, but that was something that, that was originally on the chopping block. So just something to keep in mind as well because you never know. Um, you know, it's kind of, uh, you, you know, whatever stick kind of situation. And the Head Start people really rose up and that helped them, but I think migrant is really at, in danger right now. And I did talk about that at the state law hall when we, when I was up there for delegate assembly. And unfortunately, other entities, you know, the, the districts don't deal with this, and the other county offices of ed who were there, we just have a huge, much bigger budget. So I tried to make that distinction, but it was difficult because it was like my voice, even among the counties, it was hard. So just so you know, I tried to do that and, um, provided that information specifically for them. But, you know, I think, am I correct that our migrant program is the biggest in the state, correct?
Correct, yes. So thank you for your advocacy, because advocacy is what turned it around for Head Start. So we're hoping that advocacy can turn it around. And we will be partnering with Santa Clara and Santa Cruz in this advocacy battle as well because they too run migrant programs and are very interested in partnering with us in our efforts. Thank you, Annette.
Thank you. Um, okay, so here's a bigger picture of our components of any balance. One of the requirements of the state that we disclose exactly what our ending balance is going to be used for. We have our revolving cash of five thousand, my usual LCFF reserve of three million, five thirty, CalPERS reserve, um, because this is the retirement rate that continues to increase. Um, our other post-employment benefits liability, the eight million almost, um, funds at twenty-five percent if we are fully funding our, um, OPEB. We have a small, uh, fifteen thousand dollar amount for education protection account. Uh, differentiate, differentiated assistance, um, reserved in here of almost three million. And, uh, the future facility. And the future facility needs, this is our three million that is reserved for the TIP program of La Jolla. So our economic uncertainty is at four percent is almost five million. So that's what makes up our ending balance of the twenty-four million eight seventy. Then just a few graphs in here that really mimic the graphs that are in your book. So this is the total revenue summary that shows you exactly where our revenues come from, from our LCFF sources, specialized entitlement, the build-back, which is the funds that we get back in from districts to run special education, our federal revenue, state revenue, and then the local revenue. And this is our split between restricted and unrestricted. It's always kind of shocking for people who come from school districts to take a look at what the county board. Split is, it's just about opposite for school districts. So for school districts, it'll be like a seventy percent unrestricted and thirty percent restricted. But that means for us, we have very little leeway in, in what we do with our monies. They are all tied up with strings. And here is our expenditure summary, showing again that our biggest expenditures altogether are certificated classified management and employee benefits, our salaries and benefits. You can see that's a very large part of that pie. And the same slide for our expenditures. So as we continue looking at our budget, the things that we also have to put together for the state, basically for them to approve our budget is to show them that not only are we going to be solvent to the current year, but also into subsequent years. So we always take a look at our multi-year projections and try to figure out what's going to happen in the next two years at the state and the federal level. And this is always just a reminder that cash flow projections, just, we really need to stay on top of that, not only for ourselves, but for our districts. We need to take a look at other things that affect our budget and also our district's budgets. Minimum wage increases continues to go up, which is a great thing, but it does impact our budget. As always, we have that shortage of staff that continues to be a challenge. And here's our CalPERS and CalSTRS employer contribution rates. So you can see that, that our CalPERS rate continues to climb a little bit. We had a teeny, teeny tiny little bit of reduction for twenty-five, twenty-six is what they're projecting, but it does not carry us into the next few years. And STIRS rate is flat at nineteen point one zero. Other multi-year considerations are the COLAs that we rely on quite heavily to make sure that our salaries are, are competitive. And you can see that that, after the eight point two-two that was in twenty-three, twenty-four, we've gone right back down to the usual two and three percents. Two and three percent barely covers things like step and column. So it's always a challenge for us as well as for our school districts. Also looking at the rising unemployment due to the weaker labor market could affect things. We have multi-year projections that really need to be fine-tuned to make sure that we only have one-time revenues that are used for one-time expenses. This is one of the things that we're looking at for our, our districts right now because many of them use some of those one-time federal dollars that we got after COVID for ongoing expenses. And so that's been a big challenge for them. We did not do that. And budget deferrals are set up for, they were set up for twenty-four, twenty-five. And so they have been resolved. Now, they were only budgetary ones. But going into the next year, we've got, like I mentioned, budgetary and cash. And so we're going to be paying attention to that very closely. So I just added this slide in here, a couple of slides from the school services, just to talk about property and liability. And a little bit of workers' comp in here. And these are the, these are the things that we're really concerned about, not just for us, but for our districts that are, that maybe the two eighteen, maybe two eighteen, sorry, lost that for a minute. The sexual abuse and molestation cases that are happening across the state. We're trying very hard to get legislation to mitigate the impact to our school districts. So we're watching that very closely to see what the results of those are. And I put the workers' comp on there just because they talked very clearly about the severity and the continuous trauma claims that are coming in. What's happening is each of the claims that comes into workers' comp right now is like twice as much as they ever were. So that's also something that we're watching closely.
And just clarification, there really is nothing being done on two eighteen this year. It's wait till next year.
It's so sad that we were not able to get anybody to pick that up in its entirety and, and help address that for us.
I, I fear that there's gonna need some, some municipalities, whether they're school districts or cities, that need to go bankrupt before.
Before they take.
Before they do anything.
Yeah.
Lee's not in Monterey County. Well, test case.
It is happening in Monterey.
I know, but not the bankrupt part.
Yeah. So this is just a slide that I took from school services too, that just talks a little bit because we're, we're so in tune right now to paying attention to what's going on with the federal government, what they're doing. This is just a quick little calendar to show what's happened with the federal budget in the past. It's, I really put it in there so that you can see the timelines, but it's like four times, the number of times that Congress has passed a complete on-time budget has only been four times. So it's, it's not very complimentary to them, but I wanted to put it in there so that you can see what the timeline was.
And an important point, for all of us who either work off of a fiscal year, that's the calendar year, or a fiscal year which is July through June, federal fiscal year starts October first.
Right.
So what they're working on right now is the budget that starts October first.
Correct. Thank you. So this was another school services slide, and I just put it in there because I, I, I think they're all important things that we need to think about and all things that could possibly affect our budgets. So what are the things that we have to pay attention to? And it's mostly just what could those insignificant cuts be in twenty-six for our federal programs? And then what other executive orders are going to come out of this precedent? We saw that slide that Jake showed us last meeting that, that the current precedent has delivered more executive orders than the last, however many terms. What was it, like twenty terms or something like that? So there's a lot of uncertainty out there and a lot of court cases that are going to have to be decided. And we will be watching every single one of them and seeing what the impact is on our school budget. Other continuing risks, I mentioned already the growth recession. And other things that could affect us are still just the tariff things, right? And the stock market that's going to be impacted by those. And geopolitical turmoil, all those things that happen around the world. So then we just summarize this a little bit and I let you know kind of what the next steps are for MCOE. So after this board budget study session, so you have a chance to ask all your questions and kind of take a look at what our budget looks like. Then on June eleventh is when we have the public hearing for the proposed budget and the ALCAP. And then the second meeting in June, which is June twenty-fifth, is when we will do the adoption. After that, the business office is not done. We'll be rolling position to new salary schedules for twenty-five, twenty-six. We're going to be closing the books for twenty-four, twenty-five. So then that'll happen in September. And then what we do is we'll bring you those unaudited actuals in October. And we will also then bring the first interim report to you in December. So what that looks like is we, we have our best guess right now, our, our calculated best guess as to what our ending balance is for twenty-four, twenty-five. But we will have the actual ending balance in September when the books are closed. And then when I bring you the first interim, you will see what the difference is between what we calculated to be our beginning balance in this budget compared to what it actually is. And here's my financial summary. If you don't pay attention to anything else, this is the one to pay attention to. That MCOE will be able to meet its financial obligations for twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, plus the two subsequent years. And it is not only me who gets to say that, but the state then takes my budget after it is approved by you all. And they look at it, they review it, and then they confirm or, no, they confirm, in my opinion.
Never not if confirmed.
Never, never in my life. All right. And I do want to, I've already introduced you to, to Lisa. But yeah, I want to give a special thanks to her because of the work that she did putting this budget book together. She was quite a perfectionist. So I hope that there were no, if, if you see anything in there, just don't tell her, okay? Just tell me, tell me on the side. And Linda also, thank you for your help and support in this. And of course, all of our program managers that are sitting around this table. They're the ones who start this whole process with this. And then Brenda Meadows is the person who is not here. She is the person that puts together all these program budget descriptions. So we take a couple of days after all of our programs have put together their descriptions for us. And then we review them all and we make them all pretty and put them in the book. So she's someone who does the format on those. So thank you all for listening. And we are ready to take whatever questions you have.
So looking at budget expense by category, that page. Seven, eight, seven. Looking at contract services and operating expenses, we're cooling along at thirteen million. Then last year jumped up to forty-two, and this year we're at nineteen. Oh, what, what is going on there?
Starting up, get to the right page. Yeah, this one?
Yes.
And you said contracted services one?
Yes.
So last year's, I believe that's carryover? Carryover money? Majority of those in the contracted services?
Yeah. It probably, yeah, it probably was, John. I, and I think.
With what?
When we recognize carryover from the prior year, we most generally put that into contracted services because the idea is that our programs are still going to spend it. But if you keep that question in mind, and we look at that, when we get to unaudited actuals in the two-person term, you will likely see that you will budget about the same amount in twenty-five, twenty-six. So what we have done right now is we have not recognized the carryover from the prior year. I don't know, does that make sense?
So the one twenty-four eighty-seven for twenty-five, twenty-six is going to go up?
One twenty-four eighty-seven, yes. It will actually go up once we close our books for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we see that we have not spent all of the contracted services that we had budgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five. And then we will roll them into that contracted services and that nineteen million will increase.
Okay.
I can go back and look and see specifically if there were particular contracts that we had that were greater than usual or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
Between twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it, because it's thirty million dollars. So that's my question. And, and I, and my comment is, you know, I don't want to be Debbie Downer. But when it comes to migrant ed, best-case scenario is the money is out when it's now budgeted to be out. And worst-case scenario is it's gone tomorrow.
Yep.
You know, I don't, I don't see until the Congress changes. But even if the Congress changes, then a budget has to be approved, passed, approved by the president. And he's there for three and a half more, three and three-quarters more years. So I think the organization needs to kind of start looking at contingency plans and get creative. And what are we gonna do? Because, because we're gonna lose the money doesn't mean necessarily we should just lose the program. Now, I know that's, that sounds a lot simpler than it is. But as we were all talking about, and that made a great point. It's one thing for a bunch of groups to get together around Head Start, because everyone has Head Start. Not everyone has migrant program, and certainly no one else is the number one, you know, that's the biggest migrant program in the state. And it's been kind of a foundation of this organization for as long as I've been around. And so it would break my heart if we lost the money and then, you know, it was basically it. So we're gonna lose the money. There's just no two ways about it. We're gonna lose the money for some period of time. And so the question is, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do? So.
And, and to just add on to that, you can see on that next page, on page eight, you can see exactly how much we're expecting, the fourteen million.
Yeah.
There. And you can see, if you're looking at our components of ending fund balance, how, you know, what, what do we take out of there to continue to fund a fourteen million dollar program?
Yep.
And, and knowing full well that each program has to live within its means. Because if it doesn't, then this board in the position where.
Right, because you're making a contribution every year to a program and that will eventually deplete your reserves.
Yes.
And the other piece to it is you have other programs that are underfunded as well. And so which program are you going to choose is more important than other programs? Like that's, that's asking King Midas to cut the baby in half many times. And so that is, that is why the rule this county office has always been, every program has to live within its budget.
Because we never want to cut babies in half.
Like, right. They're all very important programs, but programs have to be funded. And if they're not funded, then doesn't, yeah. It, it makes it very difficult to continue a program with no funding. And fourteen million dollars is a lot of money to have to find.
Yeah.
So to John's point, I guess I understand what he's saying and I understand what you're saying. But at what point and how do you start to develop some kind of a plan? It's just kind of up in the air, even if you say, we, we're pretty sure we probably won't get all, any of the funding. Well, how do you start to plan to move money around when we have nowhere near fourteen million dollars to move around?
Exactly. And keep in mind that at any time, you could also see your, well, special education's already underfunded. And we already have our early learning program that is also an underfunded program, which is why we have to have two separate salary schedules because people have to live within their needs. And so once you begin to subsidize one program, how, how do you not subsidize all? And you cannot really, how do I say this? It's hard to subsidize any of them because we don't have extra funding to do that. So it's, it's very, very difficult. Remember as well that the migrant program is a supplemental program, which by definition means this is in addition to. So do be rest assured, our migrant students are still going to get all the support in their school districts that they attend, just like every other student. It's, it's the supplemental dollars that allow us to do the extra stuff goes away. And so I think what John is suggesting, and we'll definitely look into this, is like what, what elements of the program can continue without funding? It's not likely to be personnel, but can the summer programs and things like that get funded with other sources?
Yeah.
Is the question.
Just to clarify, yeah, I was not suggesting that you take fourteen million dollars from someplace else on the budget and put it in there. What I was suggesting is, it got to what Dr. Gus said. Okay, blank slate, clean whiteboard. Start it, start at your objective. What do we want? We want the migrant program that delivers services that are beneficial to the students. What does that look like? And then back into how you do it. What does that look like? And then back into how you do it, whether it's, it's working with the school districts, whether it's public-private partnerships, it's, you know, it's something. You know, other than us basically getting fourteen million dollars from the.
Any other questions, or can, can I take you to the? Board budget and just kind of walk through this one page for you?
Any other questions?
You can ask questions after this.
Okay.
Okay, like on page four hundred and forty two. I always like to bring you to your board budget, just so you can do the look at it, and then, and then it helps you see. How everybody, how every other program is laid out also. So page four forty. Thirty nine and forty is the explanation of the program, and then we go into four forty one, which is. The look at what your budget is for this year. And then if you go to page four forty two, it shows you the comparison between twenty four, twenty five, and then twenty five, twenty six. So our total budget for twenty four, twenty five is seven hundred and thirteen, three ninety seven. Our total budget for seven fifty four, twenty five, twenty six is seven thirteen, eight seventy five. You can see up there that we had a couple little areas of difference. And one of the things that I wanted to point out is just the health and welfare, and you'll see this in all, in the other programs too, but there's, there's always going to be a reason for why things moved. So we had in twenty four, twenty five, a hundred and seven thousand budgeted for health and welfare. Or our board members. And in twenty five, twenty six, we have seventy thousand budgeted. That is not a reduction, and what you get. That is us looking to see what was actually spent in twenty four, twenty five, and then making that adjustment downward, right, and right sizing it. And that's one of the things that we do with every single program. We don't just roll data, we don't just roll a budget from one year to the next. This is something that is very dangerous as far as getting districts in trouble. Because they're not looking at every single line item and figuring out what is going on. So we look at every single line item, we take a look and go, okay, well, that's not how we, what we spent last year. And so we need to roll into the new year, the actual expenditures that we really believe are going to be there, we, as opposed to inflating that budget a little bit. So just wanted to kind of show you that explanation.
Yes. So I have a question on this one, and it's a question, and also from the board. Yesterday, a petition to reorganize was submitted to the county office. That petition is a citizen's petition from citizens that live in the Sprinkle School District that want some of that territory to. Go into the Washington Union School District. Yes, and so the, the petition was received yesterday, it is now at the Elections Department. If in fact it is a valid petition, then that process will begin, and there will be legal fees. So my question for Colleen is. We did not know about that when this budget was built. Is the thirty five thousand in legal fees going to be enough to cover our legal fees? Where we're still dealing with South County's unification petition and now this new one, or do we need to increase it?
We may need to increase it, but I've also put the four hundred thousand in specialized supplemental services, which is generally for the elections. And many times we don't spend quite as much as I have budgeted, we do a really conservative budget to make sure that we're covered. And so it could likely be the kind of thing where I'll be able to move some budget from that fifty, seventy specialized supplemental services. To fifty, thirty legal services. So we'll keep a close eye on that as we go through.
And. And just also to note that there, while Colleen budgets very. Conservatively, not conservatively, she budgets what the mo, what we think. The greatest elections cost could be. It's always hard to predict, because depending upon how many people get to vote in that election, it increases or decreases the cost. And in this case scenario, next year, again, there's a lot of at what ifs, we don't know. There could be two elections with both of these unification situations. But how many people would vote in that election? We don't know, especially the one in the South County area, because I'm guessing it would be the state board that would determine the area of election. So just note, because we think this is appropriate, but if. These things that we just don't know about come to pass, then we may need to, through the budget revision process.
Yep, like at first interim, and we know things are changing, make some changes.
Clarifying question. So the elections, this is specialized services, that is solely for. County committee work has nothing, we, we're not the end for elections for board members, because that would come the following.
Right, right. For twenty five, twenty six. We've got. Where's county committee?
What I was going to add is not just for elections, well, I'm sorry, I was thinking legal costs, because the legal costs are not just for lawyers for. Reorganization matters, it's also like on an appeals, if we feel we need to have a lawyer here, those costs as well. And then, so. In regard to board members' elections.
Yeah, the board member elections are in there, the County Committee on School District Organization is oh, six, five, oh. So, John, good point. We do separate those two out. And right now, we've got, that's on page four twenty five. A hundred thousand dollars in, in the County Committee.
And then the rest is for board member election. And. So we'll have. In twenty twenty. Six. There are four seats that are up. And. The. November election would happen in fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven.
Yeah.
But the primary or the, we. Do we do something in March? It's, it's been, I've never had to run.
There'll be the June.
Okay, okay, so the June one is in here. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any clarification?
Yeah, I have a question. We're back, we're back on page four forty two, and there's. It's number fifty, seventy two. It doesn't have a title.
To Lisa's, you want to name that one for us?
Yes, that is Printful Services.
And and we'll make sure that that goes in there.
Okay, and then another question, why did our communications? Increase so much? Oh, with six hundred to twenty five hundred.
Yeah.
What are we talking about so much?
Okay, so.
Oh, I bet it's our. Yeah, okay. I just answered my own question.
But also remember, we used to have that position in a different.
Yeah.
Division, so it used to be in the McCain division, and that position went away. And it got moved into this one, so it's not like new money to the budget, it's just in a new place.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. What was communications?
Yeah, so we used to have a videographer position in McCain, we. Ended that one and added a comm specialist who specializes in videography to the communications budget, so. It used to be somewhere else, and now it's here. I explained that. Correctly.
Two more questions on this one. For dues and memberships, is ACCBE in here?
Yes.
Okay. And then, where is, in the whole budget, where is Gladio?
We put that under your specialized supplemental services as well.
Okay, so so that includes Gladio.
Yeah.
Good place for.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the communications.
So, in years gone by, we had a videographer position in McCain. It was Jack Peterson. He retired. We did not refill that position. We moved the position over into the superintendent's office, because what we kept doing was going over to McCain and saying. We need, we need all these videos, we need all these videos, so it made more sense for the position to move over here. But we didn't, so we did away with the position in McCain. And created the position in communications. So that's why it looks like an increase, but to the overall budget, it's really not an increase. In fact, it's probably a decrease, because Jack Peterson was at the. End of the salary schedule, and the new communication, Nico Batista, that's his position, was at the beginning of the salary schedule.
Are these making more than twenty five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so that's just, that's just this, the county board's budgets portion of his.
Our video films.
So let me ask one more question. So we were, you guys were spending six hundred dollars before. Is that what it means?
And.
Before you created that position here?
Which one?
When he created, she's still on communications.
Communication, so when the.
Six hundred dollars?
That's the.
So only, only six hundred dollars of the money in this budget went for. Communications for the board, and now it's twenty five hundred dollars of this budget.
Because Nico started working. It's not one.
Well. That and.
There's Gladio, communications, there's other, right.
All the communications that. Yeah, you get, you get the benefit of all three of the communications people, but that portion, that twenty five hundred dollars that you see in your budget is the stuff that they do for the board. So whether it's your pictures on the wall, it's your. Website.
I didn't want to spend the money.
No, but you need it, and your business cards, and you know, all this, all that stuff. That supports communications.
Okay.
But the communications position, like just overall, while it seems like there's a new person, what we're trying to. Explain is that it's not a new, it's not a new cost to the budget. We just ended Jack Peterson's position and started a comm specialist. We, we gave it a new name and moved it into the superintendent's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, good questions.
Any other questions? You can, of course. Take your time and digesting this and. Send me an email if you have any additional questions, or come and meet with me if you want to go through it in any kind of detail. We'll make sure that all your questions are answered before that public hearing. Then comes up that first meeting in June, and then the final adoption at that last meeting in June.
And all of the division heads are here today, so when you're looking at what I call the cheat sheet. I use that, that's how I use it. These pages right here in the front. They really are, as Colleen pointed out earlier, they're showing you prior year, current year, the difference. And so if you have any questions about like why there's differences, whether it's. Less money or more money, they are all here to answer your questions now. So if you've already looked at, oh, if you have any. Please feel free to take advantage of.
I just would like to add on to what John has said about migrants. And or ask a question about that. I know that's the biggest single. Program that I think is most at risk from the federal dollars. Are there other ones? I, I think, you know, we thought Head Start kind of off the chopping block right now. Aren't there some homeless dollars as well that we're concerned with? And are there, and maybe I'm wrong in that, but there are a few others that, you know, Colleen and Dineen very carefully went through stuff with me before I went to. The CSBA meeting, and I just want. The whole board to understand that there's some other, there might be some other programs. That are at risk as well, and I, I love the way John put. The idea of being especially proactive on migrants. Maybe do we need to do that for anything else?
So, that's a. Did you want me to respond personally? So Dr. Vella is going to respond regarding the McKinney Bento, but before he jumps in on McKinney Bento. I, I think we just have to be vigilant about all federal dollars. So, you know, it's a negotiations process, or what do they call it, sausage making? In Washington DC, just like it is in Sacramento to produce the budget. And so while we think Head Start is safe today, that could always be right back on the chopping block, and so the, what the messages that we're getting from Head Start is continue the advocacy. We, we are not hearing that they're cutting Title One, Title Two, Title Three, but if they. Decided to go after Title One, Title Two, or Title Three, those would be major issues for us. Even in your districts that don't receive a lot of extra dollars, for example, Carmel. They're not going to get a lot of Title One money, but they do get some Title Two dollars, and that's what they, they have to utilize that money for professional development. We don't get much money for professional development. So while the Title Two dollars don't necessarily directly serve students, it's really the only source for. Professional development for staff, so every one of those dollars are critical. If any of you would like the spreadsheet that we gave out several months back, that shows the hundred and seventy five million dollars that comes. Come to our county from federal sources, please let us know, we're happy to get that to you, but. So any, any and all of those dollars, I think we just have to be vigilant, pay attention to what we're hearing, because they. Even if they're not on the chopping block right now, through that negotiations, to save one, they may cut something else at the federal level. And then the McKinney Bento dollars, before Dr. Vella. Explains what we know about that as of today, I just want to make sure it's clear that the McKinney Bento dollars have been decreasing. Over time, so we used to be able to fund a full-time. Person and have a little bit of extra money to, I think we had what, another halftime person or two full-time people, one certificated, one classified. And the money has been less and less over these last few years, so now it can't even fund, but we do have a full-time position. But it's not all funded through McKinney Bento dollars. And then, Dr. Vella?
And that, that's correct, Dr. Gus, I was going to add that, and. While McKinney Bento as a line item has not been proposed for elimination, what the skinny budget does do. Is that it consolidates all of the adult, or pardon, all of the homeless services, so. We don't know the impacts of that to the specific. Allocation that we receive for McKinney Bento, given that all of the school districts, most public school districts receive that fund, so. That's pending, but I would put it in the category of it's in danger of being eliminated, or it's considered for elimination. The other program I wanted to bring up, Dr. Gus, while the county, this county office does not receive a significant allocation, is LEOA, the Workforce Innovation. The same thing with adult education and the skinny budget, it's being consolidated into. A block grant, I believe, and so again, we don't know the impacts of that. But LEOA, McKinney Bento, migrant, Head Start, those are all the federally funded allocations that we receive.
And, and not federal funding, but just. And Colleen, I apologize, if you mentioned this earlier and I had a brain freeze, I do apologize. The other, I think, things that are a little bit concerning for us is, right now, the state budget is not proposing to give a COLA to CTIG, and they're. Or should I say, should I say they're not, yeah, it, the governor's budget is not proposing a COLA. I think there might be some legislation that's. In the works, trying to push for a COLA for CTIG, and also, is it our child development? Program that also, is it the state preschool? That's not proposed, or I think it's the state, sorry, lots of information goes through this head, so I try to remember the important points. But no COLA for those two programs, that's not good, because as Colleen stated earlier. All of our employees that work in those programs, they're moving over step and column. Whether they, those programs go to COLA or not, so. Anyway, the costs go up, is what I'm trying to say, so when there's no COLA to help cover some of the increasing costs, we have to find the money elsewhere. Were those the, those were the two that were on my mind.
Yeah, I didn't remember them off the top of my head. I can find it. Keep going.
Those were the two bigs that I think. Those were the two bigs that I think. So, oh, also, not this year, but at some, uh, Dr. Vella, you'll have to remind us, our, our TAC grant expires when?
So we are in the, uh, we're entering the third year of a five-year grant. Uh, so twenty-five, twenty-six would be the third year of a five-year grant. And so that, that for sure, the state, uh, has determined that the regional technical assistance model and therefore that grant is not going to be renewed. Uh, it's the intent of the RTAC to build the capacity of the county offices so that they in turn become the technical assistance centers to the corresponding districts and, and schools. And so we know for a fact that the RTAC will not be renewed. The fifth year of that, of that funding, there will be an allocation plus any carryover that we've had in the first four years. And so I'm not sure if this is related to the contracts question earlier, Dr. Stanley, but the fact that we continue to carry over that RTAC funding, that is strategic in a way so that we have a healthy fifth year uh, to be able to support the program as it is. And so it's strategic in a way to carry over some funds in years one through four, so that in year five, we can sustain the program as we, as we have it now with the number of staff that we have it. But that for sure, the legislation, um, has determined that the RTAC model is not meant to be forever. Um, but rather we're working hard in these five years to build the capacity of the county offices so that they in turn take on that role.
So good, good for the board to know. So you keep your eye on that ball over the next few years. Anytime you lose a major grant, you have to make the reductions in staff so that you don't create a structural budget issue.
And it is the California State Preschool Program, um, that the May Reby suspended the COLA. So they're not getting that two-point-three-oh percent increase in number of, and CTIG as well.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much for all the information. Okay, we're gonna move on to item six, um, future resolutions or agenda items.
Can I, um, make just a real quick comment? So at the last board meeting, the, uh, Virginia had a suggestion for a resolution. And another board member asked the question, well, what's the policy on resolutions? So we pulled out the policy on resolutions. It has not been revisited since nineteen ninety-four. So I think the policy as it stands right now, the person you were suggesting, Virginia, may not qualify. But we are going to bring that board policy to the policy committee so that it can be reviewed. And if you wanna make any revisions, you can make revisions or at least relook at it to see if it still meets your needs.
Is that coming up for the next meeting?
Yes.
Then I will be here for the next meeting.
June. June eleventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Plans have changed. I'm leaving later, but coming back later. I'll be good for the meeting.
Okay, good. Okay.
Still married though, right?
Leaving married, I don't know, I'm not sure about coming back.
I don't know because he did spend his anniversary at a board meeting in Salida.
That is true.
Yes, so.
Yeah, just putting a name or clarification. What policy number are we talking about?
What?
It's, it's interesting because we've actually worked policy and worked by law.
So here we go again.
So it's, it's, when one of them is from, yeah, like seventy-four or whatever.
Or nineteen ninety-four.
There's one that's re, yeah, and that's ninety-four, excuse me. And there's one that's more recent. So we're, it's, we're wondering why they exist. So we'll pull them up for you.
We pull out the number here and just zoom in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get them.
Cuz it's, it's online, you know, with all the policies. But when Virginia asked that question, it made us pull it out and look and I went nineteen ninety-four or, or something like that. She's pulling it up.
Ninety-two eighty.
Or is it nineteen ninety-two?
Nine-two-eight-zero.
Oh, nine-two-eight-zero. And do you have?
Bylaw, nine-two-eight-zero.
It's the one.
That's the bylaw. And there's a policy also?
Yes, that's, it's, yeah, it's a.
So you see the problem? Time to relook.
Okay, our next meeting date will be June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at nine AM. Agenda items due on May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, Annette.
We'll be back later.
Are we offline? Yes, board policy, I mean, board facilities. She, she already.